I'm gonna ask you a question.
I mean, this was supposed to be a council space anyway, but wasn't it too? But you still can't like just look out of way.
Okay, very good. Thank you. So let's go ahead and call the talent urban renewal agency meeting to order at 6:04 for June 18th. Roll call, please.
Member Parry Miller.
Here.
Member Byers.
Here.
Member Ryder, who's not present. Member Pestezo.
Here.
Member Panemirov.
Here.
Member Coley.
Here.
And Chair Airsflod.
Here.
Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. I'm just gonna make a quick announcement. We have an interpreter here tonight because there was a request for a Spanish speaking interpreter. And for that reason, I'm going to say that there is a point on our agenda that we are taking speaker request forms and I have those here. But when we get to the item 5.2, after the discussion of 5.2, if there are any questions from for interpretation at that time, I will entertain it at that time. And I'm just gonna seek consent from the board on that, counselor or member Byers.
I would ask that we also ask our incredible interpreter to translate this as well.
Yep. So if I could ask you to to repeat that, do you want me to? When they come in? Okay, very good. Are there any other people in the audience tonight that need translation? Anybody else? Can you ask for me in Spanish? Okay, thank you very much. All right. So with that, our next item on the agenda is speakers heard on non-agenda. Speaker heard on non-agenda items. And I don't have any speakers heard on non-agenda items. All of my speaker request forms are for an agenda item which is coming up later. So I'll ask at that time. Yeah, member Panamara.
I'm just wondering if we should we should consider changing the order of the agenda to accommodate people that are here earlier rather than later.
Are you requesting a change in the order? Does anybody object to changing the order between 5.1 and 5.2? Do you did you is that what you had in mind or do you want to bring it up earlier than that? Um, before the public hearing?
Yeah.
Okay, is there any objection to that? Do I have consent from the board? All right, so item 5.2 is being moved up to 4.1. Well, yeah. And then 4.2 will be the public hearing for. Okay, very good. The next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. There is nothing on consent calendar. Staff, are you prepared for the change in order? Okay, so with that, we're gonna go ahead and take up item now 4.1, which is approval of the trailer disposition plan discussion. Staff, for?
In terms of the board. Before you deny us a responsibility to deal with a trailer disposition policy of the travel trailers, gateways, and additional housing sites. As you know, the 53,000 travel trailers located down at the site were purchased by the state of Oregon through the Oregon Housing and Community Insurance Department to provide it to the nonprofit by the Golden Creek, which is part of the community with the power of the Newton program. In February 2023, the talent public real estate agency took on hundreds of different trailers through accounting and development of the city. And in many certain ways, their turnout includes both the vision plan of the travel trailers that went through by the city. In February 2023, Hura and OHCS obtained access to the project's management. The original disposition plan was developed in 2021, but was never approved by its board. Sad, the board was world concerned, oh, yes, yes, to update that document, which involves ending the new access. The executive order that was appointed by the city manager has also been carried out of the executive branch, excuse me. Has also conferred with the Hennings Town School Superintendium and the Jackson County Fire Department by a key concerning the construction and redevelopment. Access to the town is now contacting Gateway Residence concerning the possibility of relocating with the trailer they currently eyeing. A companion in the industry document will be developed that will detail how the conveyance of the trailer is being handled. The disposition plan itself provides more subtle alternative methods of disposition. And I'll just give a gap to the document. Which is found on items on the last page. So it identifies five different priorities for the disposition of creative trailers that have one would be a donation to transitional housing residents. Those would be residents who are there now in the epic trailer on the site. The second priority would be donations to nonprofits that provide transitional housing services. The third priority would be that up to three trailers are maybe conveyed to get some sheltered by for use and provide a preferred housing with fire. Priority four would be that up to five trailers may be conveyed to City Town for municipal use. And the third is by the last priority would be the sale of the trailers to the public, where they post these huge to cover the cost associated with the original planning and catch the maintenance law of the years at the period of time. So those are these four of the priorities. First of all, would be to the donations to the owners of the residence occupying the trailer on that site. And the target is moving out of town. And since we have additional priorities for trails that have not happened or are not accepted into donation. Those would be a donation for a residential institution with a stock of similar local land, the students, the students, and if we're talking about where they do the trails, the fine ways the trail of lines are all otherwise conveyed to the landowner. I'm trying to disprove it. Speaking with representatives of the county community services department and access today, a question came up as to whether another option is likely available. And that would be the trailers may be donated to Almeida Fire Survivors that have previously occupied the trailer located at the gateway residential site. And we had submitted an application for trailer occupancy on the site. Part of the implementation probably would be occupied with the three occupancy areas. But if this really is that, I think it should be achieved within 60 hours. Maybe exactly. So if that's what you're saying, it's certainly would have the possibility of adding that. And then then the office just business policies, so they can policy of that and upon which we can then develop the administrative process for
Any comments, Counselor Panamera?
So just to clarify what your recommending, staff is recommending, is that perhaps priority number two would be previous residents and fire survivors would get the the habitable trailers?
We will take that priority one B.
One B. Okay, all right. And that's that's a recommendation from staff.
Okay. I have, I definitely want to talk a little bit about first of all, I, you know, the idea that these are necessarily in order of priority. If that's the intention here, priority number one, priority number two, I'd like to talk a little bit about that. And then the other thing is I'd like to talk a little bit about you know, the intended use of the trailers is for transitional emergency housing. And whether prioritizing previous users who are now housed. If this is in order, if we're gonna make this in the in this order. It seems to me that the two highest priorities currently are priority number one being that the people that are in the transitional housing now, if they're able to relocate and continue to use it as transitional housing, that's the intention of this housing is to be transitional housing and it would maintain its its intention as such. And then the second priority that's listed here, and again, I don't know if this is meant to be in order of things, but it says to use a donation to a nonprofit that provides transitional housing services. Again, that's the intention of this housing. And it seems to me that the the priority of having previous people who occupied the trailers but are now housed don't really fall into that category of still needing transitional housing. And to me, it's less, it's it would not. It doesn't, I don't really see it as a as a priority number one B, as much as I see it as a priority number three. To me, the emergency transitional housing are the are the top priorities. Counsel Panamera?
Yeah, and I do want to hear from folks who've come here, what what their thoughts are. I'm trying to recall when we embarked upon this some years ago. And the idea, one of the ideas was that, yes, if possible, we would provide the trailer to the survivor after its use as an asset. And if I remember correctly, the idea was is to kind of just to 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 help heal the the devastating cost that the survivors had suffered financially. So while that may not be practical at this point, five years down the report, four years down the road. At the time, I think the discussion or the idea was to provide the trailer to the surviving family for use or to sell as an asset. And I don't know if other people remember things differently. I'm seeing Counselor Byers nod, so that may have been the thoughts at the time.
I just want to make sure that we don't put it, we don't create a situation where there's a conflict between the people that are in it now who still need transitional housing and may need to move to another location or have an opportunity to move to another location and maintain it as transitional housing. And and then, you know, I would hate to imagine a scenario where the person that's in it would be in conflict with somebody who was previously in it, for example. And then again, I definitely see that if it can continue on as transitional housing even under another nonprofit, that that opportunity rises above creating an additional asset to somebody who may already be resettled. But I think that that's a subject for further discussion. And we'll go ahead and take speaker request forms as soon as we're soon as soon as we're done with our conversation piece. That's when I'll take those. Yeah. Is there any other questions or comments? All right, so we'll go ahead and do that now, then. With that, we'll call forward Kimberly Domain or I'm sorry, what was it? McQueen? If you'll please state your name and city of residence for the record, please.
Housing and Gateway, Talley Gateway Community.
And we give you five minutes. So if somebody will watch a timer. All right, Kimberly?
So my biggest question was how do you have moved through the almost five years of transitioning through being survivors of wildfire with the closing of Gateway Talent, transitional housing, and the meeting tonight in the disposition of the trailers? Does this mean that the residents that live in the trailers that are building two can live in the community without rental agreement or access? So right now, we are, we're still transitioning and we don't have any future goals. Because what's up? Does it mean that this prospect of getting into TMAB, which is permanent housing, which is that right now, the process phase two? Is that nullifying the residency of eight way retaining the temporary living trailers? Or does the residents that are don't even be fairly much better on this stuff and eligible, I would clearly need placement for permanent housing? I knew what you were saying, you know. I believe Kimberly was, I think we had the same questions, you know, we're in the house, we like that, we're in the state of our communities and work here. And I'm going to, yeah, permanent housing.
So I'm gonna, we're, I'm gonna ask board to to relax the rules. We don't normally answer questions, but I think this is a situation where we could answer questions. So if is there any objection to that? So I have consent from the board. Gary, do you want to address the question?
That's a question that we're not prepared to answer here on this forum. What we're asking with tonight is whether this concept of that is made in real estate, just in brotherhood, is acceptable to those board. After that decision is made, it will be addressed in public like laws and other things, you know, during the course of the day that need to be considered as the public administrator process. There are a number of considerations, many of which are inevitable to each participant that does affect their ability to secure housing elsewhere negatively or positively or affect their their income, affect their other benefits. So I appreciate those and other considerations need to be worked out. And we're not adopting a budget policy with restricted hours in that and just finding out by the system they practice with the rural board and the system.
Member Byers?
I just want to say that asking the questions is a good thing tonight. Please ask them. We want to hear the question. So please.
When you get your vote, I'll also round the next
Now, the one with that is some of our A and C's, you know, if we are implementing a community, and you know, there's a good sense that we're skating at the end line.
Thank you for your great comments. I would also say that it's good to write some of these questions down and ask also access some of the questions because access in the city of Talent and OHCS, the state, are meeting on a pretty regular basis. And they'll be able to field a lot of these questions together. So don't hesitate to to write your questions down and ask them of access to. Some of them might be, they may just be able to outright answer. And I do also want to say that this is not, this is the beginning of a long process. So please don't hear today that, and don't be fooled by misinformation that can get pumped around the community that that we're starting an eviction process. We're not doing that. We're starting a long conversation about how to close out this project where everybody gets resettled. And we are able in this conversation to figure out what to do with the trailers as we head towards that. But don't if you have any questions about your occupancy there, please make sure that you reach out to the city and ask those questions and we'll be able to answer them as we go along. But don't be fooled by misinformation. Okay? The next speaker is Timothy Shortwell? Yep. And no, it's it's a great name. Timothy, if you'll please state your name and your city of residence for the record, please.
Timothy Shatswell, the Gateway Project. We have lived in the Gateway Project for almost three years. We were supposed to be about three months, you know, after that, talking with access and all that. We're kind of a little disappointed with access, you know, they claim communication, 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 but I'm sure you guys have seen how this project has become. It was supposed to be apartments by now. So we are kind of wondering just if, you know, if this is gonna happen, awesome, the trailer will really help us. I think would help a lot of people in these communities, but I also think apartments would still help people in communities. For me, the trailer is best because I can keep it safe, I can firefight, I can do my job. I work for great back to Pacific Crest, meaning I've worked for Northern Pacific Forest, so I plan on staying in Oregon. I'm from Colorado. I moved here about 10 years ago and about a couple of years after, I'm on fire. It was my fiance's mother's house and we were renting. It was 650 a month. Obviously, you guys know that's pretty, pretty low in the valley. You will not find that anymore. So I think that's why a lot of us are asking, yes, please, if you can, get these trailers to the people in it because we got nowhere else to go. And, you know, also, this is something of the firefighter that I hope, you know, being that we all look up to you guys, you know, we vote for you and we make sure that you're doing the right things and for the community, I think this might be the right thing. There are a lot of good people on the Gateway Project. You'll see a lot of us mowing our lawns because access hasn't taken care of it. So there's a lot of problems with access and you know, we're more or less trying to have some hope that we can get away from access and give us the trailers to do that and move away and continue our lives. Help a lot. Thank you for your time.
Great. I do want to also say for the record that that the contract for that property currently is through January of 2025 with the ability to extend it if we need to go longer on Gateway. And so access is access isn't slowing us down. It and and I appreciate your comments, but it isn't. It isn't going to be apartments until the Gateway project is fulfilled. So I just want to make sure that everybody understands the timeline is January 2025 with the possibility of extension if we still need some of that mission out there. So with that, I'd like to call up Johnny Aldana Ramirez. Okay. Great. Okay, great. All right. Okay, so that is it on speaker request form. So at this time, I'll I'm sorry, go ahead, Gary.
One of the mentions that I've been talking to the excess and northern housing, we deserve to that they we believe that the binary contact for questions to Gateway residents would be directed to the two assets, the insurance. We're leaving about every two weeks of that national chair, one of those three agencies we're working on doing this. And we'll put the, the no study, we're doing things together within the next two years. But we the same is not going to be the one making individual houses in the city. Alone, we improve with our partners.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification because what I did say was save your questions and ask them of the city or access and and we're only, we have a small response. I mean, we have a small scope of responsibility for the housing mission, almost all of it, the contractors with access. So I filter your questions through access for the meeting. So I may have misinformed. So thank you for making that clarification. So he said, if you want to copy the city manager on your questions to access, that's okay. Yeah, thank you for that clarification. That's important. All right, back to the board members. Is there any input? I just want to clarify, did you say that this is meant to be in order of priority? That's the intention. Okay. Are there any other comments? Or questions? Gary?
Or words, we always rely on which on the you know, maybe that we're actually carrying.
Member Byers?
I do have a question. Gary, on priority number two, is that listed because there is a specific plan in mind or is that a in case? Great.
Are there any other questions or comments? Counselor Par, Panamera?
So just to clarify, Gary, I couldn't hear very well. You just said that the additional language would be one B? Or did you say three?
It would be, I'm asking if you like insurance.
Priority three?
Or priority two or priority one B? Those are really, yeah. Counsel Panamera?
Yeah, I I kind of want it to be one B, just, you know, for just kind of, I don't know. Between the two of those things, I would, I would put it in in one B. I do, I do think a lot of people will you know, I mean, these will be decided on a case by case basis. And yeah, I think I, you know, I don't see the the previous owner and the 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 current owner would have first dibs basically. And then the previous And then the previous owner, anything that was um still available and habitable. Um, would be available and and people will be making these decisions on a case by case basis. It may count um towards income. Uh, people will have to understand that if their benefits might be affected. Those are things that a caseworker can can explain. Um, but I think the policy uh to to prioritize fire survivors is is a good one. Um, so I'm kind of leaning towards towards one B.
I will share that my concerns are that um. That if I, my concerns are that we make these, that we make the the policy clear and objective. I don't want to see the city in a situation where we're arbitrating. Who gets what and um. Uh, or deciding on fine lines about um conflicts. Um, about, you know, who's in the trailer now and who was in the trailer before. And and if they both are claiming ownership of the trailer, what happens next? And I know that there's, one second. Um, I know that there's administrative, um, there's an administration piece of this that's going to happen next. But uh, one of the, one of the reasons I feel pretty strongly about priority, this being priority three. And I realize I'm just one voice of of without a vote unless it's split, but um. The uh is that it does take, it it does take the conflict um out of. Uh, the the potential conflict or arbitration out of the situation to to a great degree. And there was concerns expressed along the way that um. That uh folks that are resettled at this point in time um. Providing uh, oh wait, I think it was OHCS in our, in our meeting that uh that you mentioned had said that. Um, there would be some concerns about, you know, what would be the purpose of of them having the trailer at that point? Is it recreational use? Is it, you know, is it for an asset to sell so that they can recover? And then how do we determine that? Um, those are the kinds of things I I really. Am am concerned that the city would be in a position to be arbitrating. And um, so any way that we can set this up so that it's clear and objective would be my. My, my biggest uh hope. Counselor Colay and then uh Counselor Byers and then Counselor Perry Miller.
Yeah, um, I generally agree with that and I think that. I would either put it at priority number three or. Potentially not even put it on there at all just because of that potential conflict that it would create because you would have to have. Some sort of application process, whereas, you know, the trailers that somebody is are currently living in, it's a very obvious thing. Um, and with the idea that you brought up before that the intent of these is that they're transitional housing. So having one and two be tied directly to either they go to somebody who's going to move it and live in it. Or it goes to a nonprofit that provides transitional housing. A very similar situation, just at a different site aside from gateway, I think. I think the idea of giving them to fire survivors is nice. But yeah, it's going to end up with, you know, okay, we have 10 trailers. We open up this application process. It's going to end up with somebody not getting something in the end of it. It feels like they deserved it, you know, for whatever reason. And it's going to be really hard to weigh those reasons of, yeah, do you want to sell it as an asset to pay your bills? The whole question of how it affects your income and how that's going to affect your other. Bills and stuff, so I I would either put it at three or just. Potentially not even consider it because I think there's a lot of good options here.
Yeah, I appreciate that you've clarified the point that I tried to make earlier and I don't think I made it really well about um. That uh for priority one, it would be utilized for the purpose of relocating. Uh, Counselor Byers and then Counselor Perry Miller.
Yeah, I'm actually wondering if you can speak more to your point about it creating conflict. A point of clarification I'm looking for is are you um anticipating conflict between a current resident of a trailer? Who would can like to continue using that housing? Versus someone who used to use that trailer and would like to claim it? Or are you worried about conflict between different past residents of the same trailer?
I think that all of the above is possible. I think it's possible for an occupant. Um, to want to make, to want to uh have a, you know, make a um application for that because of that. I think it's important that we don't use language that suggests this is a right. Um, but that somebody wants to make an application for ownership that's currently in it. Um, and then someone who might want to make an application who was previously in it, there's the potential for a conflict there, I believe. And um, or then, you know. Uh, if that's the case, then if they were looking at other trailers, would. Would there be arbitration around condition? Would there be arbitration? I um, you know, coming from the planning commission, think in terms of clear and objective um standards that make it. Um, that take the city out of the position of having to arbitrate and having to uh make. Make arbitrary decisions and um so. Yeah, I I think it's possible that all of the above could be the case. Yeah.
Yep, just to follow up on that, then I would say I, based on your standard that you're putting forth about clear and objective. I would say this priority one, which to me essentially reads in a condensed form as. Current residents have first right of refusal if the trailer is deemed habitable. Um, to me, that is pretty clear and objective. Uh, I definitely see how beyond that point, it would not seem clear and it would seem quite subjective. But that first point to me is. You know.
And then if the previous person wanted to have a trailer as well and the trailer has been. Has been. First right of refusal, would they be allowed to look at another trailer?
I think wouldn't the process then allow all current occupants of all trailers first right of refusal if the trailer is deemed habitable? And then based on if there are any available trailers after that point. The second tier of applicants are invited to apply.
Yeah, that's the very position I'm trying to avoid, that my view. Uh, would would seek to avoid. Yeah, got it. Um, Counselor Perry Miller?
Thank you. Um, so just a question about this. Policy document, would this be something, Gary, that the city would work with access to figure out? As far as these types of issues or would this be something that the city would be in charge of figuring out on our own?
We need to, we would need a world with action and the state. Uh, to go off of the administrative practices.
And then who would, who would apply the administrative practices?
Uh, well, the the city would need to be involved in the conveyance. Or the sort of, it would be involved in the conveyance, so. I don't really ask the next thing to try to be to think of it.
Counselor Penomar?
Um, but are you saying that the city would be responsible to decide who gets the trailer? Or could that be like more of a caseworker or state decision?
I think it would be uh impossible to change.
No, I'm sorry, we don't take, no. I I am going to give uh an opportunity for translation after this, but yeah. Counselor Penomar?
So in the discussion, I heard um a little bit about wanting the trailers to be put to good use and all of that. And I, I wonder, and this is maybe a question for staff or or legal. Um, whether we can have an expectation. Um, so if a, if a, an occupant of trailer number three says, yes, I want that trailer. Um, are do in making that decision, can can we, you know, put any requirements? That you have to live there or and use it for transitional housing or you can't sell it or or anything like that? That's a, or or we're just not allowed to think about that.
Reasons with the industry. Uh, uh, requirements that would fall on. Uh, tonight we're asking. Do you want to provide? Uh, for everything. Is the, how to do, will be able to do the follow. We have to add that in the section that is ready for.
Counselor Prestizo?
Yeah, I'm just uh backing up a little bit because I didn't quite get clarity. My question is following up on um Eleanor's is, do we know yet if? However, the administrative regulations are put together. Is this city going to be in a position to be deciding who gets each specific trailer? Or would that be a different agency? Is the city just, once that's decided, then the city just works on the conveyor? Okay, so none of that's been decided yet, so the city could be. Involved in in making a decision about.
Be involved somewhat.
Okay. Right. I guess I'm trying to see if there's a distinction between. We're the owners and someone else is the recipient and who's deciding who the recipient should be. Based on, you know, the this policy.
That's, that is, yes, it would be.
Okay.
Now, uh Dave?
I should just say that I I'm new to the. Working on the tour of uh issues at all, so I'm not sure what. Constraints we have at the state level. We need, um, so there may be things that the state, that we want to do that the state says you can't do. Um, so we do have a lot of questions yet. Um, and uh, and that'll be part of working through this administrative process.
Which makes, in my mind, um, you know, because I I I. I can see in this discussion where um some of my concerns could be alleviated. But without having some of these questions answered, it's hard for us to say. Um, yes, this is the policy and here should be the priority. Um, I I agree that I agree with all of the policy tenants. Um, but just how they're prioritized, I think, is challenging to make. I mean, it might not be challenging for some to make a decision, but if I were voting, I'd have a difficult time. Um, I, you know, I have questions about waivers and liabilities and things like that as we are the owners, right? And um, and without answers to that, it makes it difficult to um. To, you know, to. To make a decision based uh with so so much specificity of, you know. Order of business, et cetera. I mean, order of uh, order of priority, et cetera. Um, but that's just, just the way my. Yeah, the the way I see it. Uh, Counselor. Colay?
Yeah, I have all, all those same concerns as you and others, but I don't have a problem with. Moving forward with this disposition plan. As it's written. Potentially minus one B or moving it to three. Um, because I think we have, I mean, I have, at some point, we have to decide on this and. All the, that nitty gritty administrative. Stuff will have to be decided afterwards because we have to start somewhere, I guess, because we could, we could try to solve the whole issue.
Yeah, I think we just said the same thing. Yeah, I think we said the exact same thing just now. I I agree with all the tenants, including.
Yeah.
One B. It's it's prioritizing or how they're prioritized and and our ability to ask questions as we go. Um, that I, that I have concerns about. Counselor Byers and then Counselor Penomar?
Um, I just wanted to state for the record because I'm realizing very few people have the priorities in front of them. That priority number one is donation to transitional housing. And. It's helpful to know that.
Yeah, and I don't think any of us disagree with that.
Right.
Yeah, um, and I don't, again, I want to make it clear, I don't disagree with any of the the priorities. I I just have concerns about the order of priorities and and um that sort of thing. Counselor Penomar and then Counselor Perry Miller?
Um, so back to the discussion of one B versus three for um previous residents. Um, I understood that, you know, one A would have priority over one B. So basically by it'd be like one, two, and then everything down below. But I don't have a problem with putting uh the previous residents as priority three. So that is after, if if that's what folks want, after, after a nonprofit. Um, I do think that it's, that the residents, that the previous residents really should be considered as part of that. Because in a way, it's kind of um not doing that is kind of penalizing people who are able to find um something. And we do not know that just because those folks aren't living in the gateway, whether they found permanent housing or not. They may have just decided to move in with relatives or or whatever. Um. But uh, so that's, so I just don't feel that residents should be penalized um. Uh, for, you know, actually um having moved out earlier. So that's why I think they should be in there. I'm not really concerned um exactly where they are on the list. Uh, but I too feel like I'm very comfortable with this um moving forward with this tonight.
Counselor Perry Miller?
Um, I agree with um Counselor Penomar. I do kind of worry though, I feel like priority two is um. The kind of priority that could swallow up. All of the um potential leftover trailers. So I'm I'm torn between um. Putting Gary's addition as a new priority two or bumping it back to priority three. But the other thing that I'm remembering about the addition is that it also includes. Um, people who are. Who were on the waitlist. But were not ever able to be placed. Which feels like a different population. So it's past residents as well as people who would have been residents but never got into the gateway. Does that make sense? So I mean, that's just something to think about.
Uh, Counselor Penomar?
I want to thank Counselor Perry Miller for bringing that up because that kind of slipped past me. So so to clarify, um, there's basically two groups of people, people who who lived in the gateway but left. And people were on the waiting list for the gate. Um, and. I'm asking, I guess I'm asking Steph, do you see those as as, you know, distinct? Could be prior, prioritized separately? Okay, so we could be looking at like one A, B, C, or one, two, three for residents. And then um to Counselor Perry Miller's point about a a nonprofit like road retreat or something else. Being able to take whatever's left over, which could be like a dozen or less. Um, that could, I I see that as as entirely possible. If they could take any, they could probably take a fair number. So so that's what I, that's what I'm thinking about now is one, two, three in terms of. Current residents, past residents and waiting list. And followed by uh what we see as two, three, four, five here, starting with the nonprofits.
Any further discussion?
Counselor Perry Miller?
Um, I'll just say that I agree with that. I think that the the current priority number two is very important priority. But I also think that um if our goal is to prioritize fire survivors. Um, that list of priorities, I think, speaks to that. And I think that there are nonprofits in our valley that are doing amazing work, but they also. Have other resources that um. Fire survivors may not have access to and those, so that's just something that I'm thinking about as I'm looking at these different priorities.
Counselor Prestizo?
Uh, just clarity, I'm thinking that I read that even we donate them to another agency that they were still intended for fire survivors? Or did I misunderstand that?
But it could. Counselor, uh Dave?
And I I just, uh, this latest discussion about about people on the waitlist. Probably does get us into making judgments.
Mm-hmm.
Because what, we would have to ask what happened when they didn't get a trailer. What happened then? Did they get somewhere? Did they get in someplace else? Um, you know, where are they now? I just. It it, this could turn out to be a, a. A big administrative judgment call that the council will have to make. So just keep in mind that that's, uh, I I think the mayor's caution about making this clear and object. As clear and objective as possible is uh. is, uh, is something to keep in mind.
I just want to add that the, one way to think about this, one way to think about this is just not creating conflict between the values behind, uh, behind providing these trailers. If, if it's this board's will to provide these trailers as a, an extra benefit for um, the experience that they had, then, then that is one, uh, that's one set of values that really can inform the way you go, the way you move forward. Um, if the other values are that these trailers are still in use, uh, for transitional housing and, and could continue to be used for, for transitional housing. That's another value set that could inform. Um, and just, I, I don't know, it just in my mind, I feel like, uh, the transitional housing piece is easier to create clear and objective standards around. But, um, you know, I of course support this board in whatever decision they make and, uh, and would, would continue to do so. Counselor Panamara?
Yeah, I think you're saying the devil's in the details and as well as the clear and objective standards, um, that we would expect to see in administrative policy. Um, but I do think that, that, um, while this board doesn't make those kinds of decisions as, as part of our general work, I think, I think that there are people that do. And I think that there are models that we can use from, that we can draw from. Uh, even, even if people have the same criteria and the same group, some sort of lottery or something. Um, I'm, I'm not too worried, um, as long as the administrative policy, um, is what, you know, fair and, um, clear. Um, and I'm confident that that, that that can, that that can happen.
Yep. To be clear, I'm not saying the devil's in the details. I'm saying the opposite of that, but just, just saying, yeah. Okay. Um, all right. I appreciate, uh, this conversation. I'm glad we had it and, um, yeah, I, I, one thing I am in full agreeance is, is that all of these priorities make sense and that we, we need to move a, a policy forward so we can get on the long journey, um, to uh, completing this mission of transitional housing. So with that, uh, I am going to entertain questions, uh, and here's a specific, oh, okay. I just want to say for the record specifically what I would entertain are questions of, that they didn't understand something we were talking about. Thank you so much. Okay. Um, so with that, uh, I'll entertain a motion. Counselor Perry Miller?
I'm not quite ready. Well, I know we need a motion. Um, I guess I was just going to say that based on what Dave said, um, if the appetite of the board is that it would be a better choice to not include people still on the waitlist, I would be open to that as well. Does that make sense?
Yes. It's not included at this time. So you would actually have to add it at this point.
True.
Oh, it did. Oh, you're right. Thanks for pointing that out because I didn't think it was in there. No, I'm sorry. We don't take, yeah. Counselor Panamara?
So I have a question of staff. So you had, this, this was just a discussion today. And, um, and this was with the state who, who suggested adding this? Access adding this. Did they, um, talk about why, um, former transitional housing residents and, and applicants? Is it applicants currently in the queue or previously in the queue? And I was wondering if they gave any, um, explanation in support of that?
The, the, um, well, the group of ages that were, um, previous residents and that were in the queue.
So, so basically said, they said there is interest from these folks. And just to be clear, in the queue means in the queue now, waiting in line now, or is there no queue now?
They, they, that there are applicants who, there are persons applying at about the time when you, uh, provided that box, you know, two residents and two survivors.
Okay, so recently. Sounds recent.
She's asking if that was recent, if those were recent inquiries. Yeah. But. Counselor Perry Miller?
Just to be clear, I mean, we don't know how long they've been on the waitlist. Is that what you were asking? I don't think there's any way for, I don't think we know that. Access would probably know how long they were in line.
I, I guess because at some point we stopped, um, filling trailers. So at the point that we stopped, there was a, um, there was still a waitlist.
Counselor Prestizo?
Yeah, I'm gonna throw a little bit of a different idea in here. And I'm coming from the position of if we wind up being part of arbitrating, who's going to get what? Whether it's a lottery or whatever it is. I'm just thinking, and I could be wrong, that that's going to take, um, more staff time from a city that's already struggling with staffing constraints. And so I'm wondering if instead of doing one, two, one, A, B, C, and then two, if we can just say our priority is one, people are living in them now. If they want them, they get first dibs. And two, they go to, they would go to a, another agency with the understanding that they would implement what we were talking about in one B and one C, so that the city can just be done with it and get on with all the other stuff we have to do. But that priorities would still follow the trailers. So they want us to spend time? Well, well, I'm just wondering if, yeah, I guess I'm, I'm wondering if the, if one A, we get through that and everyone is living in one. And once one gets one and those are gone to those people, then we just give the rest to this other agency. So our involvement is over. And then with the stipulation that the other agency will follow B and C as they try to utilize those trailers. So they'd still be our fire survivors. But we wouldn't be involved in. I don't know if that's possible or not, but it seems like it would be a cleaner move for the city.
Counselor Panamara?
I'll just say, the way I envision this working with partners, it's, it's not like it would be like Gary said, an undue burden. I'm just not seeing this as like our job. We're, we're involved, but we're not really on the hook for, um, doing this. And I, and like I say, I think the state nonprofits like access, I know, long-term recovery group, you know, awards money all the time. Um, that, that there are groups unlike us who have experience with this. So I'm, I'm less worried about the process.
Right. I can say as someone who's attended the meetings, they are expecting a partnership. Right. The last comment that, that they made was that. Is that?
Yeah, I, I just, I'm just thinking from my own experience working in cities that it's meetings and meetings and meetings and meetings until it's all done in that staff time. And, um, so that's just where I'm coming from. And I can understand that they want a partnership. But if the agreement is that the trailers are going to go to this other agency that does this kind of stuff all the time, that then, that everyone would be happy the partnership would be dissolved at that point because the trailer would belong to this other agency.
I have to say that one of the thoughts, and you know, I mean, I think this is worth saying, one of the thoughts that had occurred to me along the way is under priority one is, um, that donation of the transitional housing goes to the current resident. If they can move and relocate, that would be the purpose of moving and relocate. Otherwise, you know, somebody could have been there for six weeks when somebody else had been there for two and a half years. And, and, uh, in that case, a lottery system does make sense. But for those who can move and relocate, um, as, as, uh, as a, as a main reason of, of sending the trailer with them for ownership, that was kind of what I thought it was headed towards. And, um, other, yeah, otherwise I think the way this policy reads is, um, a little uh, inequitable, I guess, would be for those who were in that place for a long time. And, and then has, you know, it might have been recently reoccupied by somebody else. That gives them the first right of refusal. That's not how I would want to look at it myself. If I were in charge of setting this up, it would be if you have a place where you could relocate and you're able to relocate, then take the trailer and it's yours. Um, and, um, otherwise, if they, if they just stay till the end of the mission and are resettled at some point in time, it seems to me that anybody that occupied that trailer would have equal right to it on some level. Um, you know, and then what do you look at? Who was in it the longest? Who was, you know, I mean, it's, it's complicated, but, um, maybe, maybe there I'm saying the devil's in the details. That would be one, one proposed change that I think we could make to the language is that if you're able to relocate the trailer and live in it, um, it, that would give you the first right of refusal for that purpose. Counselor Panamara, I think I saw your hand go up.
That's always a, um, so this is really a question back to Gary. You know, we have concerns about burdening staff and all of that. And I'm just wondering, um, from your perspective, uh, what is, what is doable, uh, for the city in terms of the policy? Is it still what we have before us with one B? Or, um, do you see that there, it could be beneficial to the city to make some of the changes discussed?
Yeah. Well, again, I, you know, we'll have to lay this to rest and make a decision here, but I do think that the, you know, people who are in it now, who can relocate now and move the trailer now, that's clear and objective. That's clear and objective. And I'm thinking in those terms. Um, and, um, and I, you know, or tomorrow or next month or whatever, I found a place I can go. Can I have the trailer? Can I take it with me? That's clear and objective. Or at any time during their occupancy, if they found a place to, to move to that they could take the trailer to, to me, that's a clear and objective standard. I, I don't even see any reason to put a timeframe on it other than it has to be before the mission is over. It says at the time they move out of the housing program. So that could be, you know, the program is over, they've resettled in another house, and now they also get the trailer. That doesn't, that, I don't think that's clear and objective. The way that reads. But if they were, if they were, if they found, if they were able to relocate because they found a place to relocate their trailer, then to me, it's clear and objective to give them the trailer at that point in time. And, um, and that, uh, to me, that takes the city out of the decision of making uh, decisions that could be perceived as generositys or, or not generositys or arbitrary. And I just don't want to see us get it, get in. If we, if we are going to be part of the team, I just like to see that the decision lines be really, really clear so that we don't get sued. Uh, Counselor Prestizo?
You just made me think of another question. So if we get to the end of the program and there's still people living in trailers, but they have nowhere to take them, does that then mean that, well, we're going to look for someone else who can take the trailers?
Or we're going to extend the lease.
Or we'll extend the.
Extend the gateway program.
Okay, so there's.
There's an extension built into the lease of that land.
All right.
I mean, that's, I'm not saying that's what we will do, saying that that is.
Well, I'm just wondering because, um, it could sort of just keep going on forever that way. And at some point, it seems we'll, we'll have to make that choice potentially with some people because they can't, there's no place to take it, but we need to move on with that piece of ground.
Getting a trailer is pretty motivating.
Yeah, you have to have a place to take it.
Right.
Yeah, that's the struggle.
All right. So, uh, I think, yeah, we'll entertain a motion. Um, Gary, you need to have us decide on what to do with this amendment before we, right?
Right, so one option would be to retest it as, um, figure priority one, A and B, break the section. Uh, or, uh, create a new priority two, or first priority one. For that, probably three, seven.
What pleases the board? Counselor Panamara?
I mean, I'll, I'll make the one, two, three motion and then we can, if somebody wants to change it, that's fine. Um, I move to, uh, adopt, the policy is written with the, uh, modification of inserting priority two to be, uh, former transitional res, housing residents of the gateway and priority three to be applicants in the queue for the gateway.
Second. We have a motion in a second to make priority one as written, priority two, uh, to be donation to former transition, transitional housing residents and priority three to be people that are in the queue. Is there any further discussion?
And the rest in the same order after that.
Yeah, yeah. And so insert.
Changing order from there. Yeah. Any further discussion? I just would say, uh, for the record that I think it is catastrophic to put uh, option number three in. But we'll see. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Byers?
I agree. I don't think uh, option number, priority number three should be included. I think it's there are too many variables. There are too many variables for that priority.
Counselor Perry Miller?
Thank you. I would be fine with taking out that one.
If Counselor Panamara?
Can I ask a question? So this is for staff. Is there any repercussions from access concerns if we were to take out number three or do you think it'll be fine? I'll move to amend.
We have a motion to amend. What is it?
I'll move to amend my own motion to take out number three.
Second, we have a motion in a second to take out number three. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. So back to the original motion. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, everybody, great discussion. Thank you all for coming. We appreciate your interest in what we're doing here, and we invite you to. Please follow our our calendar. It's on the city website and come to our meetings anytime, especially moving forward. Because this discussion is going to be ongoing and you have an opportunity to speak at every meeting. It's just in order. On speaker request forms and then once you've spoken, we don't take any more speaker speakers. Yeah, I'm I'm sorry, I can't take any more comments. All right, so thank you, everybody, and we'll move on to another item. Yeah, you want to take a five minute break? Yeah, we're going to take a three minute break.
Yeah, we have to, we have budget.
Yeah, let's just keep going. Let's just keep going. Let's do it.
Let's just do it and break before city council.
Yeah, 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 let's do that. Power through. So the next item on the agenda is item five point one, which is considerate, no. Four point two, which is budget hearing for fiscal year twenty twenty four dash twenty twenty five budget. Staffer, Counselor Perry Miller?
Thank you, Mayor. I need to declare a conflict of interest for this item as well as for item five point one. So I need to declare conflict because I work for the Talent Business Alliance, a nonprofit organization that has a grant. Proposed within this budget for a rare AmeriCore participant. So I am recusing myself from this. I won't be participating and I won't be voting, but I do plan to stay at the dais.
Thank you. Okay. Staff report? One second. Folks, can you guys have your conversation in the light? It's just hard. This room is so echoey. Normally I wouldn't say that, but this room is terrible, so we can hear better if you guys. Thank you, by the way. Thank you, Team Access, for everything that you do. We appreciate you. All right, go ahead. All right, are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'm going to go ahead and at this time I'll read the public hearing script and get ready to open the public hearing. The purpose of this public hearing is to hear input and receive questions from the community regarding. The proposed fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five budget. If you are a community member, you can ask questions or make a comment by raising your hand in Zoom or pressing six if you are on the phone. I will call on you when it is your turn to speak. So at this time, I will now open the public hearing at seven seventeen. We've had our staff report already. So do we have any speaker request forms, Hector? Are there anybody? Is there anybody pressing number six? Okay. So we should probably amend this script because it's an old script, so. All right. So if there's no speaker request form, I'm going to close the public hearing at this time and open it up for discussion. Counselor Byers?
No, I'm just.
Ready to make a motion?
I am.
If there's no questions, I'll entertain the motion. Counselor Byers?
I move to adopt the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five Tura budget.
We have a motion in a second to adopt the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five Tura budget. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Panamara?
I just want to clarify, I see another board action to approve resolution twenty four dot. Two, is that the one we should be doing for this budget? I'm just confused as to.
Four point one.
But that's a public hearing, right?
What is it's five point, you're you're saying you're confused about the motion?
Yeah, so I I see under five point one, there's a motion approving the resolution, which is essentially approving the budget. Or are they separate? Can we do both?
Okay, I'm looking at the bottom of.
Yeah, I saw that too, but that's a public hearing. We're not supposed to. Do anything but hear, right?
I know, there's usually I close the public hearing, so I usually entertain the motion afterwards, and that's what the.
Yeah.
Is there any further report for five point one? Okay, so if. With that, we'll entertain the motion. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those roll call, please.
Just would you like me to read the motion including the resolution?
Why don't you go ahead and do that just for the record because it has the resolution number on it?
I move to approve resolution twenty four dash two, a resolution of the Urban Rental Agency of the City of Talent, adopting the fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five budget.
And it's the second? Okay, all right. So if there's no further discussion. Roll call, please.
Counsel, board member Coley?
Yes.
Board member Panamara?
Yes.
Board member Pesezo?
Yes.
Board member Byers?
Yeah.
And board member Perry Miller?
I'm not voting slash.
I'm sorry about that. Chair, motion passes.
Thank you so much, Hector. All right, are there, let's see, the next item on the agenda is items from chair or board members. I just want to say for the record that I've asked Gary to to bring some of the updated work that's happening on Gateway to. An upcoming meeting and and that should be coming up at the next meeting. Is that right? Yeah, okay, July, in the July meeting. Anybody else? All right, no written communications. This meeting's adjourned at seven twenty one. I will call the meeting to order for the council at seven twenty five. Please.